You're good, Mike.
Okay.
Okay.
Great, sorry.
I don't know, I don't know if she's... I know Carl's not gonna be here.
Katie too.
Katie's not gonna be here.
Yeah.
Okay. Good, alright. Good evening everyone, welcome to tonight's Hyde Park Central School District's Board of Education meeting. Today is August fourteenth, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing promotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons, and to meet with legal counsel regarding privileged matters?
So move tibbits.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The votes. Motion carried, we're now in executive session.
The other piece that I want to share is, I just want to thank our leadership team. We just came back from our leadership session where we were focusing on the four disciplines of execution, which is really about alignment with goals and really focusing on specific areas that we want to target and improve. And I'm really excited about what we have in store for
... is to be a bus driver here in the district and that we have vacancies as well as our social media posts for during our Team Tuesdays. But I would like to personally thank the High Park Chamber because they allowed us to join their farmers market as a unique way to connect with the community to talk about our various roles within the district that a lot of people might not even realize exist. So this past Saturday, the HR department was at the High Park Farmers Market and we turned a lot of heads. Why is the school here? And let me tell you why. And we talked about all of the great roles that a lot of people don't even realize we have because people think substitutes, they think teachers. But they don't often think that every single role in a school district needs a substitute. If our groundskeeper is out, we still need that if our secretaries and clerical staff are out, so we still need those roles. So we had a really good conversations with folks. We handed out over a dozen applications, some of which have already come back and we have interviews set up for it. But it was also just really great for community connections. We had people come up asking about if lunch was free again this year, asking about the town hall for the cell phones. So I really think the community just liked seeing us out there and we will be out there again this Saturday. Cassandra and Tatiana from the HR department will be out there continuing to promote and so we hope to see the fruits of that labor as well.
Thank you.
I have a couple of things. I do have a bigger item that I want to talk about related to the taxes, but I would like to do that when we get to that item under new business, which is 11.4. Because there is some documents there that the board could look at while I'm reviewing it. But I'd also like to mention that this week we had our external audit, the fieldwork portion of it. That's the audit for the financial statements. I was commenting earlier that it felt like a really easy week for me, but that's because of all of the hard work for people in our office like Tina. Now Tina's day job is our accountant. So our accounting staff, the payroll staff and the accounts payable staff did a really good job in getting all the information to the auditors that they requested. Because they were so efficient, the auditors are actually done with their fieldwork, even though they had been scheduled to be here all week. And over the next few weeks, there'll be a few questions that they ask us that we'll have to answer as they go through their own review. And they'll be meeting with our audit committee at the end of September to go over their findings. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? That concludes our... All right. Moving on to 8.1, can I get a motion to enter public participation?
So moved Christine.
Second Margaret.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. This is a reminder, if you'd like to address the board, you get a total of three minutes per speaker for a total of 21 minutes for the first public participation. And please provide your name and address when you reach the podium. Would anyone like to address the board?
My name is Mary Alden. I live at Seven High Street in Satsburg. And on your desk, you have a sheet that I have provided for you. And I am a grad graduate of FDR, 1976. I'm here tonight to ask for the school board to educate the community about the cameras that are on the buses that photograph and video cars passing when the yellow lights come on as the buses prepare to stop. We were photographed passing a bus across from the FDR site on Route 9 in January of 2025. We received a $250 ticket. The ticket states that if you get another fine within 18 months of the first, you will get a higher ticket fee. And if a third within the 18 months, another higher fee. I told this story to many people and know of two other people that have gotten tickets. One was for passing a bus on a four-lane road down by the Culinary Institute going in the opposite direction. So they were going south, she was going north, and it was a four-lane road. It was in which she thought it was okay to pass on a four-lane road going the opposite direction. The other person was a high school senior on his way to school. My goal of being here tonight is to ask the district to post an article in your newsletter, tell the students at the high school, and put it on the district public websites about the state mandated cameras so that others are aware and hopefully do not get a ticket in the mail. If the article would state what the rules are for the buses and the yellow blinking lights and
... Is there anyone else who wants to address the board? At this time, we'll close public participation. So just for the bus, right, so the whole camera system isn't run by the district. It's actually run by this sheriff's department and some company that does the cameras. So we don't get anything out of it other than safety of our students, right? And, you know, it's unfortunate my son got one, but, you know, it's in the passing school bus. And the four-lane rule, right, that is a law. You can't pass even on a four-lane highway, a divided highway. The guy driving, you can't see every morning, divided highway on Route 9, bus stops here, you have to stop here. I mean, that's just a law that, you know, you have to be aware of. But it's not a bad idea to maybe put the rules, you know, in a newsletter and, you know, maybe some resources point them to, you know, where they can find school bus laws, you know, type of thing.
And maybe have them, you know, accessible on the web too, sort of a clickable item on the web, on our webpage.
Okay. I called Transportation Office and no one seemed to know anything about it. So that's why I decided to come here tonight. It's a great idea. Really good idea.
I don't know. Do we know why things get... I'm sure over the summer, they don't want kids just doing whatever.
It's a safety concern more than anything. We don't have the staff to monitor as we do during the school year, student usage. And so I think that's a decision, but I'd have to look into it more because I'm not well versed in that decision.
But I think options for students who don't necessarily have access, as you pointed out.
asking about the town hall for the cell phones. So I really think the community just liked seeing us out there. Um, and we will be out there again this Saturday. Um, Cassandra and Tatiana from the HR department will be out there continuing to promote. And so uh we hope to see the fruits of that labor as well.
Thank you.
Um, I, I have a couple of things. I do have a, a bigger item that I want to talk about related to the taxes, but I would like to do that um when we get to that item under new business, which is eleven point four. Um, because there is some documents there that the board could look at while I'm reviewing it. Uh, but I'd also like to mention that this week we had our external audit, the fieldwork portion of it. That's the audit for the financial statements. Um, I was uh commenting earlier that it felt like a really easy week for me, but that's because of all of the hard work for people in our office like Tina. Now Tina's day job is our accountant. Uh, so our accounting staff, the payroll staff and the accounts payable staff did a really good job in uh getting all the information to the auditors that they requested. Um, because they were so efficient, the auditors are actually done with their fieldwork, even though they had been scheduled to be here all week. And over the next few weeks, uh there'll be a few questions that they ask us um that we'll have to answer as they go through their own review. Um, and they'll be meeting with our audit committee at the end of September to go over their findings. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? That concludes our, all right. Uh, moving on to eight point one, can I get a motion to enter public participation?
So moved Christine.
Second, Margaret.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. This is reminder, you'll have, uh, if you'd like to address the board, you get a total of three minutes per speaker for a total of twenty-one minutes for the first uh public participation. And please provide your name and address when you reach the podium. Would anyone like to address the board?
My name is Mary Alden. I live at Seven High Street in Satsburg. And on your desk, you have a sheet that I have provided for you. And um, I am a grad graduate of FDR nineteen seventy-six. I'm here tonight to ask for the school board to educate the community about the cameras that are on the buses that photograph and video cars passing when the yellow lights come on as the buses prepare to stop. We were photographed passing a bus across from the FDR site on Route nine in January of twenty twenty-five. We were, we received a two hundred and fifty dollar ticket. The ticket states that if you get another fine within eighteen months of the first, you will get a higher ticket fee. And if a third within the eighteen months, another higher fee. I told this story to many people and know of two other people that have gotten tickets. One was for passing a bus on a four lane road down by the Culinary Institute going in the opposite direction. So they were going south, she was going north, and it was a four lane road. Um, it was in which she thought it was okay to pass on a, on a four lane road going the opposite direction. The other person was a high school senior on his way to school. My goal of being here tonight is to ask the district to post an article in your newsletter, tell the students at the high school and put it on the district public websites about the state mandated, man, mandated cameras so that others are aware and hopefully do not get a ticket in the mail. If the article would state what the rules are for the buses and the yellow blinking lights and
Is there anyone else uh who can address the board? At this time, we'll close public participation. So uh so just uh for the bus, right, so the, the whole camera system isn't run by the district. It's actually run by this sheriff's department and some company that does the cameras. So we don't get anything out of it, other than safety of our students, right? And, and um, I, you know, it's unfortunate, my, my son got one, but like, you know, and you know, it, it's in the passing school bus. And the four lane rule, right, right, that is a law. You can't pass even on a four lane highway. Like a divided highway, the guy driving, you can't see every morning, divided highway on Route nine. Bus stops here, you have to stop here. I mean, that's just a law that, you know, you have, you have to be aware of. But it's not a bad idea to maybe put the rules, you know, in a, in a newsletter and, you know, maybe some resources point them to, you know, where they can find school bus um laws, you know, type of thing.
And may, maybe have them uh, you know, accessible on the web too, sort of a clickable item on the web, on, on our webpage.
Okay.
They call transportation office. No one seemed to know anything about it. So that's why I decided to come here tonight. Thank you. It's a great idea. Really good idea.
Um. I don't know, what, do we know why uh things get, I'm sure over the summer, they don't want kids just doing whatever.
Yeah. It's a safety concern more than anything. Um, we don't have the staff to monitor as we do during the school year, student usage and um, so I think that's, that's a decision, but I'd have to look into it more because
Okay.
and I'm not well versed in, in that decision.
But, but I think, I think options for students who don't necessarily have access, as you pointed out, something, I don't know if it's in-house or something, that's make sure that, yeah.
I think that's a, a very valid point. It's, it, thank you, Roman, for bringing that up. I recently heard the same thing from another student. Um, I know that they were just recently um kind of open so that they can participate in ACT or SAT um, um sessions. So we'll definitely look into that further to understand why they're locked down and to uh, trusting Tibbet's point, we want to make sure that students have access. Right? So thank you for bringing that up.
Maybe a procedure where if somebody knows they're going to need it over the summer, right?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna explore a little bit and then we'll come up with a procedure to, to provide access.
And this is why it's important for students. We wouldn't have known if, if
Absolutely.
you hadn't mentioned it. So thank you.
And, and what I would add to that is, you know, for any summer technology, usually there's a down period to do kind of rollovers with, with Google products. Sometimes there's an update. You know, when I was a tech director across the river, we'd advertise that in spring when the Chromebooks were collected, sent home. You know, what you do here is parent square saying during the summer, school tools or infinite campus will be down on these days. Chromebooks will not be available. We had a monitoring system where we can monitor what they were talking about in the email. I don't think Hyde Park has that. So there's a safety factor of if they're communicating and nobody's monitoring it. So I think maybe that's why they turned them off. So, but as long as if we could find out, did they send a message home? I'm sure they must have. Um, you know, before school ended, that during the summer, there'll be dates for those blackout dates because you need blackout dates for any application to do some maintenance. And then as far as the cameras, again, I think that's a great idea just to educate people. A lot of people don't know about the four lane road and they get burned on it. Um, the one thing I would say is I just hope our bus drivers, you know, sometimes when I'm driving to work across the river, not in Dutchess, sometimes bus drivers over there, they'll put those yellow lights on half of my mile down the road. And it will confuse the drivers of, are we stopping here? Are we waiting for the bus? So sometimes the bus drivers, they turn those lights on very, very early. Sometimes they'll switch on at the last minute. So you know, hopefully they're given enough time to let people know to slow down enough without being excessive.
But it's my understanding that they only take the, the picture when it, when it's red, right?
It should only be taking the picture when it's
Stop, when the stop signs out and it's red, that's when they
Oh wait, okay, I'm just gonna tell you, we do not go through a red light.
Okay.
So we just
Yeah, I hope it's only when it's red because that'd be unfair for the sale.
Yeah, well, I was, I was told that it was also for the yellow.
Oh.
Um, as a warning.
That's, that's a good start.
Okay. Yeah.
Just sort of just procedural wise, like so, like there'll be another opportunity to address the board afterwards. It's not like a interactive uh meeting. It's okay. People have to learn that all the time when they first come. So.
So yeah, if we could find out if it's red or yellow, or it's both.
It should be red. Should be red. But, you know, they, they have, I can't see the pictures, but I don't, I can't.
It's only one.
Yep, I, I can't tell on the pictures, but we'll, we can look at it, right? Um, okay. Um, with that, moving on to nine point one, board um subcommittee reports or professional development updates. My, maybe, I mean, we had our board retreat, right? And uh that went well. So. Learned about the uh, the IV program a little bit. And I think we're gonna look at that a little more, maybe.
And we're gonna do um board goals tonight. We were gonna do that at the end, but now we're doing it tonight.
Yeah, that's the next, you know, don't jump ahead.
Don't get your gallows, please.
Um, I need, so I guess no other committee reports?
For Dutchess County School Boards, we had the summer leadership meeting. And we backed out what we're gonna talk about each month. So I can share that with um, with the board, just to say what the plan is with meetings this year.
Okay. All right, uh, moving on to nine point two, board discussion, including consent agenda items. So let's do the, anybody have any consent agenda questions first?
I do. You need to go. I have to. Um, okay. So let's see, starting with ten point two five. Um, art and science of teaching. It's, it looks like professional development. Um, it's through the school improvement grant, but I just was hoping to get a little more clarification because it is a it, it, that's a larger sum than we usually spend on PD. And we did a lot with science of reading and math. So could we just get some, some more details on that?
I'll start and then I'll let Melissa just chime in afterwards. So part of the district improvement, um, com- the comprehensive improvement plan process requires that there are um certain research-based practices that are implemented. Um, this was identified by the district leadership team, the instructional district leadership team, because it really captured a lot of the instructional practices or moves that were research-based.
Many more people than we know. Um, so we sent out two hundred and forty-five um no notifications to people that we have in the various subroles um throughout the district. Um, and they have been so determined first to respond. So all of the, the reappointments will happen at this twenty eighth meeting. Um, and we're doing very, very well so far. Um, we have about half, um, have, have responded. Um, out of the hundred and two responses that we've had so far, we're going to have twelve say that they're no longer interested in serving the district in those roles. Um, in terms of the substitute roles specifically for teachers, um, we have about close to sixty guesses so far, but yet another
AD that haven't responded yet. Um, so we are looking pretty good there. Um, and in terms of the reappointment of substitutes, that's something that we'll see a procedural change in, in the future. Um, in the past, they have gone up for reappointment every year. Uh, and the only reason that that has happened was because of the language used at the, the time of appointment. We're looking to move that procedure forward, um, change the way that we appoint substitutes so that they, once they're appointed, they continue to be in good standing as, as an employee until they resign from that role so that they don't have to be reappointed annually. And that should help to streamline our procedures as well.
That's, that's good. Sixty is a good number. Your sixty teachers, good.
And we have another ninety that haven't responded yet. So, right?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So I have um, um, questions on two agenda items, ten point seven. Um, uh, the claims auditor report. There are, there are always two things that, that I'm interested in as we look at these reports. One is, do we see a trend in more claims? Or if you want to know what the trend is over time. The other is, um, I'd like to know what fraction of total POs? And I, and I'd asked Linda this and uh she sent me back numbers. Uh, out of the four hundred and fifty-four claims in April, there were thirty-seven issues are identified, so less than ten percent. And then in addition to that, in the executive comment, Linda's provided us with a, a set of um explanations for about fifteen or so as well. Uh, so that, that gives me more confidence. It really is just a, a very small fraction of the total PO. So that's, that was just something I wanted to do. And if you wanted to add anything to that.
Oh, sure. We, we've actually um seen uh decrease in the number of, of comments or items that used to be on the claims audit reports. Um, the claims auditor does leave everything on the report even when it's resolved and um for the last year, we've been looking into the ones that are marked as late. Um, and usually they're not late by the standards that we follow, that we have to pay within thirty days. But a very common thing with technology now is that vendors will send the accounts payable office an invoice the same day they receive the purchase order from the purchasing agent. When we don't even have the goods yet, right? So, you know, we have to pay within thirty days of receiving it. So we do, we have been tracking that. Um, but the claims auditor didn't realize that. When they get the information, they just see the date on the invoice and when we paid it. And then um, we are going to look into more issues like as they come up on that report. We did talk to the people in the accounts payable about some of the other items like missing invoice because we can't pay, make a payment without invoice. Um, and because the reports that you're looking at now are from um April and May, they didn't really remember those specifically, but they have always like discovered the invoice. Sometimes it's actually in the packet, but not recognized by the auditors and invoice. Sometimes they have it, you know, in another place. So the i- items always get resolved, but we'll include that information in the future.
Thank you, thank you. Um, the other one I had is I, and I, and I uh gave Melissa a heads up on this, and this is on item ten point eight, uh disposable obsolete items. Um, in particular, I was uh interested in the file from the Ralph R. Smith uh library. And my, my concern was that the rationale, the, the global rationale, or wasn't rationale, the, the, the statement was withdrawn library books and there was no rationale for it. Um, in the other um files from other libraries, it said old or um hasn't been withdrawn, taken out. There was a code in a list and I, and, and I, and I really appreciate i- i- at the very least, it tells me someone has taken the time to, to look and assess why, why this is being withdrawn. And, and removal of library books for me is a very touchy issue. So I, so I, so I brought that to her. And the other one was um in some of the lists, they, even the ones that tell you why it's been removed, sometimes they say um that it's been replaced. And I was just curious, who, how is the decision made that this is going to be replaced and this isn't?
Sure.
So I'll turn it over to you.
So um, you know, every year librarians weed through their collection. They look at the circulation of titles. Some books are really well-loved and as a result, get damaged and need to be replaced. Um, and other items have kind of lost favor for students. Either they're no longer of interest or they're older books that don't have the colorful covers that entice kids to pull them off the shelf. Um, so part of what the librarians do is they go through their collection. They assess the condition of the texts. If they're damaged in any way, the, they will replace them if they're in circulation and kids are taking them out. Um, the, they look at also um, nonfiction texts in particular because we have access to um reference materials online that are more up to date. So if they have nonfiction texts that are outdated in some way, they will remove those from circulation. So I did reach out to Mr. Wirt, who um works in, with the librarians and oversees the librarians, and we're going to ask for them to give a little more detail in their descriptions when they're getting rid of books and what the rationale is. Um, they do replace a lot of the books that they're getting rid of with either newer versions or just replacing them with the same book because it's well-loved. Um, so that's something that they do on an annual basis.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other discussion on consent agenda?
I would just add to that, you know, the libraries, again, it's sad to see books being thrown out. I used to work at the Mid Hudson Library System for eight and a half years and you know, there's only so much room on the shelf. And as they order more and more books, I know it's sad to see books leaving, but you, you know.
Well, I completely understand that. I just wanted to, I want, I want to understand the rationale and I want to know, I want to know that there is a rationale. That's, that's
Of course.
All right. So next item we got to talk about is our board goals. Hopefully everybody had a chance to look at them. So this year, we're going to use the super eval tool. Um, but last year, we had, um, I was just quickly titled the goals. We had the superintendent evaluation as a goal. Um, examine communication structures and protocols. And board self-evaluation. Um, so those were our three goals that we had um last year. Any thoughts on this year?
I think we have to change two since we've or get something different into two because we're not doing the, for the chats, right? And that's basically what priority two was.
Yeah. And then she has another document attached that is from super eval, eval, right?
Yeah, that, that would be equivalent to like going through and identifying each of those things where we decided just focusing on three goals and not necessarily all these criteria. Because that's what, that's what this would be.
That's all the criteria, right?
Yeah, you don't want to do that. You want to do the three goals.
Yeah, I made a mistake of starting to do that. I said, wait a minute, we have, this is not right. Um, for, for district priority two, Margaret, you were just pointing out that two of the three um involve community chats, which we've decided to place on hold, I think, is unless, or, or to only have if there's a uh, an issue that seems to be generating a conversation in the community.
Somebody would request them.
Yeah, community chats.
So, so we could simply update the wording to when we hear of um issues that are particularly relevant or generating a lot of conversation, the community will hold the chat or we can, we, we move them all together, I think. Those are the two options.
Yes, yeah, I mean, or come up with something completely different.
Yeah, I, I've been trying to figure out what else.
Well, I think um, can, you know, since it's on communication and protocols, you know, and community involvement, um, maybe looking at us having a goal of how many things we're going to attend. Um, you know, like we had it, had to attend three chats. Um, there's a lot of community events and we go when we can, but it, I don't think it would be a bad thing if we said the expectation is to get to this many and just kind of bump up our presence in the community at different events. Um.
I think that's a really good idea because I really do think that, you know, community involvement and being out there and visible to the community is important. So I, I do like Margaret's idea to attend events with them.
So there's enough events that you don't have to go, you know, if you're working during the day, doing a meeting event, right? There's so many.
Like, can I share a, a thought?
Sure.
Um, so, so in, in these types of situations, less is more and we identified that in our process, um, going through the the, the action plan for our strategic blueprint. And so one of the things that I would ask the board to consider is um, we are focusing on what we call the wildly important goal. All right, so what, what's the one area that we could really focus on as a system that will allow us to move the needle, right, in terms of student achievement? And so for our leaders, uh, we've identified literacy, increasing literacy, uh proficiency, um, as our wildly important goal. So with that process, you're identifying, you want to move from X to Y by a certain time period so that everyone in the organization is focused on that specific goal. So one example for the board to consider is if you are in agreement with moving in that direction is ensuring that the conditions for increasing uh student proficiency from, and we can give you the baseline, X to Y by June twenty twenty-six by allocating necessary uh resources, right? Because the board is responsible for budget, is responsible for making sure all the resources are there so that the leaders are able to do what they do, where the teachers are able to do what they do. So that's just one consideration for the board to consider. But that's something that we're focusing on. The buildings are going to be focusing on, the divisions are going to be focusing on. So if there's sort of like this coherence and alignment across the system, it might be, it might be something that the board may want to consider so that we're, we're sort of like all rowing in that same direction. And if you, you, you can choose a secondary goal, uh wildly important goal. Um, but that's something that I, I definitely want to just put out to, to the team.
I would just jump in and I'd say, you know, I absolutely agree. I think, I, I think it's more important, the spirit of it, it's, it's not like, you know, a checkbox, okay, I went to two of these, I went to three of these and I stayed for ten minutes, you know? I think it's more the spirit of, of doing things. I think we all, everybody on this board is committed and they go to a lot of events. You know, I went recently to the Ulster Savings Community Event, saw Christine there. So there's a lot of things going on where we're there and doing that. But I think it's more important, like Dr. Roman is saying, to focus, you know, on one thing rather than too many things. And then it can kind of become overwhelming. Very quickly, I was at a training this week and a former, a current superintendent, um, Kevin McGowan gave us a quote and he said, if everything is important, then nothing is important. And what that means is if you're trying to do everything for everybody, everywhere, you kind of get lost in the minutia. So I, I kind of agree with what Dr. Roman's saying.
So you're saying take out So you're saying take out the community involvement piece? To me, for me, wait, so for me, that's a priority of the board. So we have, so how can we work that community engagement? Cause I would, I would have to disagree that we're not all at, at meaningful events. If you go for your, for whatever reason, I won't get into that. But if we're focused on student achievement and we want to focus on that, then we should look at how are we getting information on student um activities and projects and, and how, how can we keep in touch with parents and community members? Because that is what I keep hearing that the community wants, but they can't get to a specific event. So if we go to events, I don't think that's that's un I, I think that's appropriate for us to look at our community engagement. How we do that is, how we do that, you know, there's lots of things we could do. Um, what Dr. Roman was talking about is, is a little bit different goal. So maybe if we kept the community goal and then looked at a goal towards um academics. But certainly we don't want to go back to when I first came on the board, there were eleven, twelve goals. And I was like, these are not goals. This is like a checklist, right? We want to have two or three tops that are, that are high priorities. So I agree with that sentiment. I just don't want to lose the community involvement piece.
Yeah, and nobody's suggesting to take out community involvement. Community involvement is about everything that we do. I'm just saying that it's the spirit of that, that there's ways to achieve that, which we all do. It's not a matter of just, you know, saying everybody has to do two things or three things. Because let's face it, that's what we've been doing with the chats for the last two years and people really haven't been coming to those. We've been checking off the box and it hasn't been effective whatsoever.
That's why we're not doing it.
Of course, I agree. That's, that's certainly, certainly the reason. So I don't think we should go back to that, just we need to do this so many times. That's not, that's not going to help.
So I, I, I think we've come a long way from the days that Margaret's talking about. And last year, we spent a lot of time aligning our goals with the district priorities, which I thought was a really great move forward and to minimize things. One of the things we want to make sure though is whatever goals we set that they are clearly actionable and outcomes are measurable. Otherwise they're, otherwise they're kind of just platitudes. Uh, Dr. Roman, my one concern about the, the proposal you made is it's really simply a commitment to support financially things going forward. Um, in every financial, every, every decision we make for everything has to be a cost benefit analysis. And I worry that as a board goal, it, it almost appears as though we're giving you a blanket P O. And I, and I want to, and I, I understand and I'm very sympathetic to what you're saying. But, but I worry about basically saying we're going to support something financially as a goal. I think, I think having the overwhelming goal. Um, I would support the notion that the overwhelming goal is to um continue to improve our engagement with the community in ways where they understand where we are and in what direction. So that, that would be my, my belief.
Well, so I think we could have more than yeah, so like, you know, a goal of making sure we do his evaluation, I think is a, is a perfectly fine goal to have. And it's not an overwhelming goal, right? Uh, community engagement. Um, I think that's an important one, you know, to, to have. And what I would recommend, you know, the board self-evaluation and, and swap that out with some variant of aligning with the district's goal, that single goal. Like, I, I, I don't, I don't, I agree with you. I don't want to say, yep, we're going to support you financially on any, anything you want to do because that's not true, right? So we, we would not succeed in that goal.
Yeah, finding a way to word that, right? Or saying, you know, I think it's, I, I think it's a really laudable goal and I think those two are great.
Cause I, I think it connects the dots between the district's goal of student achievement and how is, how is the board going to play into that, right? What, what, how, what is our goal? I just don't know how to word that, yeah, so.
But I, I'm sorry.
We, now we could work on word, wording.
May, maybe if you could send that out to us, like the wording of that, and then, you know, it'd be an email, we can, um, you know. And then we could think of ideas on our, on our own. And at the next meeting, we can discuss possible wordsmithing of, of, of a goal for that one.
So, so to perhaps move things along, might I suggest that we're talking about sort of two really overarching goals and one sub-goal. The sub-goal being we're going to evaluate ourselves and we're doing awesome. Um, and, and the other two are to, to
No, no, that wasn't the, the one. So the one is
Sub, the SUPEReval, right? The SUPEReval?
Now, yeah, his, his evaluation.
Oh, the, so, so
So today we asked his, his evaluation, community engagement and board self.
Right, so I'm saying the self-evaluation.
And I suggested take out the self-evaluation and put in the alignment with the district goal.
Oh, I, I, so what I'm suggesting, and we can debate this, is that we have two major goals. The one where we are trying to wordsmith so that, that we show some commitment to student achievements and things that way. And the second is the community engagement. And then sort of the, the, the smaller goals would be superintendent evaluation and perhaps our own evaluation. So that, that's what I'm suggesting.
Well, there's still, I mean, still a goal. It doesn't matter if it's a small goal or big goal, it's still before goals. I mean, and I'm okay with four goals. I, cause again.
Not eleven.
Right, I mean, and, and they're not
Yeah.
unrealistic because there are things we should be doing, right? So there are goals we need to put in place. So if you could send out, you know, your goal and everybody think about how we want to word our goal to align with their goal. Um, and any wordsmithing in the um, I think the superintendent evaluation mini-goal is fine, the, the way it is. Maybe just, we got to clean up the dates. Um. The um, the communication goal probably needs some wording. So come, come back next meeting with some ideas on how you want to uh change the wording in here. Obviously take out all the stuff about community chats or change the wording in the community chats to be as needed um type of thing. But any, again, any other ideas for that one? And then the self-evaluation, the mini-goal is
Small G goal.
Small G goal. It's, I think it's fine the way it's written.
Yeah, those, those two are, you know, short term. We do them and you can do it and done. These other ones are ones that sort of span the entire.
Right, and it's important what you said, you, you, we need to have a measurable goal because it's, it is a waste of time if you don't have a way to measure our success.
Yeah, okay. Anything, Christine? Sound good to you?
That's good.
Good plan?
Sounds good to me.
All right, Margaret, Mike, you good with that?
I'm on, I'm all over it.
All right, moving on to um let's see, there was nothing else in there, right, to discuss? Nope, okay, so. Can I get a motion um to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Move to it.
And Christine?
All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Can I just congratulate Annie? Uh, so I, I just want to congratulate Annie. She's going to be our new F E R Assistant Principal. Welcome to the team.
All right, we have eleven point one. Can I get a motion to approve the capital project change order, phase two A by law?
So move to it.
Second, Margaret.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Motion carried. Eleven point two, uh, can I get a motion to approve the capital project change order, phase two B? Which is thirty five point seven million dollars at Haveland and Ralph R.
Move to Christine.
Second to it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Motion carry. We're skipping eleven dot three because we took that out of the agenda. Uh, eleven point four, tax warrants and tax rates. Can I get a motion to approve this?
Move it.
Second, Margaret.
Any discussion?
I think Linda wanted to uh walk us through this.
Thank you. So I'll just say, in the past, I used to do a presentation on this. Um, but last year, uh, it was just part of the discussion, so we decided to leave it here again. Um, I did prepare the slides. They're the same that we uh show every year. Um, these are available uh through Board Docs. Um, they'll also be on our website um after tonight. And I can provide people with all any information that would, they would like to. So I think it's just important to point out that the tax uh rate is comprised of three different factors. Um, every year during the budget season, um, when we're balancing the budget, we come up with the amount that we would need in the budget um for the tax levy, um, that gets approved by the board when they adopt the budget. And it's also part of the budget that's adopted uh or approved by the voters, excuse me. Um, for this year, uh, we were below the tax cap. We went out for a two percent increase, um, even though we could have gone uh to, just about three percent. Uh, the other items that affect the tax rates are just became available to the school district in August. Um, that's the taxable assessed values for each town. Um, we have five towns in our school district. They each have an assessor that provides the assessment rolls to us. And then we also have to consider uh equalization rates because we do have five towns in our school district. Um, we have to uh work with the, well, the state actually compares the information in the assessments to determine if they're uh, if it's creating a fair situation for the, all of the residents in all five towns. Um, a really good example for us is the fact that Hyde Park has not had a townwide assessment since nineteen ninety four. Um, so the properties are undervalued. And if they were taxed at the rate of their current assessment, someone that lives in another town like Clinton that has um an assessment done just in two thousand twenty five, they would be paying uh more than their fair share. So there's uh some other slides about that later on, I'll show. Um, this slide here just shows the actual calculation of, or considering the omitted taxes. In our budget, we were approved to have a tax levy of seventy two million, two hundred fifty eight thousand, four hundred forty one. Um, however, the county informed us that there are some omitted taxes from prior years. Um, those are taxes that were left off the tax rolls but should have been billed to um individuals. They'll be collecting that money uh throughout this year and they'll pay it to the school district uh during the twenty five, twenty six school year. So we actually have to deduct those amounts from our tax levy because otherwise we would actually, uh, it would be like double dipping. Um, I always use my home as an example. When we bought our home, we, uh, the people that lived there before us had a veteran's uh exemption, a credit for that. We don't qualify for that, but it took the town two years to take it off our tax bill. So in the third year, we had to uh pay the difference and that came back to the school district then. So um, those are what omitted taxes are, things like that. Um, this slide here shows the actual calculation. Um, I won't go through everything, but I did number at the top. People want to refer to columns. You basically start with the assessed value. Uh, that's the information that comes from the towns. You'll notice in column three, we're actually adding in uh forty five hundred dollars to Hyde Park. Um, there are three properties in, in Hyde Park that get a clergy exemption. But those uh three properties that get the exemption should only affect Hyde Park. The law is like that wouldn't uh, that shouldn't cause taxpayers in other towns to pay more taxes. So we actually add that back to Hyde Park. Um, and then in, so in line four, it's just the uh recalculated assessed value. Line five shows the actual equalization rates. So what that means is anything that's a one point oh, that's a hundred percent, meaning New York State agrees with the assessments um that the town assessors provided. Uh, both of those towns that have a hundred percent assessed or equalization rate, and in Rhinebeck, just had a reassessment in two thousand twenty five. The other towns have not had um a current uh assessment and New York State believes that the properties in those towns are undervalued. Um, Hyde Park has a really low assess or equalization rate of thirty five and a half percent. Uh, that's because, um, as I said earlier, we haven't had a townwide reassessment since nineteen ninety four. Uh, Pleasant Valley hasn't had a reassessment since two thousand nineteen. Um, I don't remember exactly when Poughkeepsie had theirs, maybe uh two thousand twenty two or twenty three. So those three towns um are um under valued according to the state. And in order to uh create a more fair situation uh for all the towns, we have to apply the equalization rate to bring their uh true value up to calculate the tax rate. Um, at the end um of the calculation, the uh last column that shaded, that's the actual tax rate for each town. Um, you'll notice that for the uh towns that are uh have an equalization rate of a hundred percent, their tax rate per thousand is about sixteen uh point five of dollars. That's also uh the, what we call the true, the tax rate and the true value. Um, all of the true value are in Hyde Park, everyone's uh rate is sixteen point five. We have to assign different tax rates when the assessed value is undervalued because we can't change the assessments. So for example, in Hyde Park, I live in the town of Hyde Park, my home is on the tax rolls is a hundred thirty five thousand dollars worth um the, the value. But when we apply the equalization rate, it's three hundred seventy seven thousand. When we do the tax bills, we can't change the assessment to three seventy seven, but by changing the tax rate to forty six, uh, I can't read it from here, but forty six point four, I think it is, it has the same effect as if my house was valued at three hundred seventy seven thousand.
So another question on that. So if I were to build a new house in Hyde Park, that's going to have a current assess, uh, uh, or actual assessed value, right?
I believe so, yes.
Ninety four rates, they're going to say your house is worth three hundred thousand. So that person's going to have to pay the regular, with, you know, basically a hundred percent as if there was a thing and they get, have to pay the equalization rate?
I'm not really sure how the town assesses, but if someone feels that their town, their property is uh assessed incorrectly, um, they can go to grievance day, which is usually in March. If they're denied by the town, at that time, they have the opportunity to uh file a claim with this, with the uh Supreme Court of it's in Duchess County, but Supreme Court of New York State, it's a small claims, uh, small claims court. And it goes to what is called a small, small claims assessment review.
But it wouldn't be the assessment, right? Because if, if I build a new house and they say the town comes out and says that's worth two hundred thousand dollars, right? So that's the actual thing of it. But then you're going to apply the equalization rate, so I'm going to pay the, the, you know, what it should be and also pay the penalty of
Apply the equalization rate to every property. We can't
Those, those people that are doing that really have to pay attention and grieve that somehow, right?
Yes, and I, I do know, I have talked to other people that have gone through that process and, you know, the house may truly be valued at that higher amount. Um. The courts look at the, um, and even the town will look at comparables. They look at what are, what are the neighbors' houses valued at, um, you know, other, other properties within the town. Um, then I have uh several slides where I just break out the information to compare it to the prior year. So this slide shows uh the current year taxable value compared to uh the twenty four, twenty five taxable value. Uh, you'll notice overall the taxable values in our district went up three point six percent. Um, I'll just say this too, if the taxable uh values did not change and the equalization rates did not change for any town, the change in the tax rate would be what we see in the budget. So it would have been a two percent increase for everybody. When tax, taxable assessed values increase, uh, property taxes, the uh tax rate change seems to, or tends to go down because there's more property or, or more value. We're not changing our levy. Um, we just have uh, you know, a higher uh value of from property for properties to tax. And then uh conversely, when the equalization rates, from the next page, oh, this, this slide compares the equalization rates to the tax rates. But when the equalization rates decrease, uh, the tax rates for that town tend to increase. Um, so you can see on here, um, every town, um, except for Pleasant Valley and Poughkeepsie. So the other three are experiencing a tax rate decrease. Uh, Pleasant Valley is experiencing a really uh large increase. Uh, that's because their equalization rate um fell eleven and a half uh percentage points from last year. It was really significant. So New York State is uh claiming that their assessment is really out of line uh compared to the other uh towns in our district. Um, so overall, um, if all of the, the properties were valued at their true value, all of our uh taxpayers would be experiencing a four point seven percent decrease for their tax rate over last year. But because of the equalization rate, that only holds true for the two towns that are uh valued at a hundred percent. For Hyde Park, uh, there's a decrease of point seven three percent. And for Poughkeepsie, the increase is point five nine. They also had a, a small change in their uh equalization rate by about five percentage points. Whereas Hyde Park's uh equalization rate changed only by one point five. So uh this is the tax levy compared year to year. Um. We did have a two percent increase. We did have a two percent increase in our budget. When you look here, it shows the two point zero three percent. That's related to the omitted taxes. Means the amount of omitted taxes varies from year to year. And then at the bottom, you can see the ta- the actual tax level changed. So that's the part that was in the budget. For the two thousand twenty five, twenty six school year, we increased the tax levy by two percent. The year before, it was three point six six percent. And here's a another comparison. This uh chart here compares the tax rates over the uh it shows the tax rates over the last four years. Um, and at the bottom of the page, it shows the tax rate changes over those same years. Again, that the amount in the middle, the one that's like highlighted yellow, that's the actual tax rates on the true value, and those have decreased every year since two thousand twenty two, twenty. Uh, here we have the equalization rates compared to prior years. So you can see that Pleasant Valley, the town that's experiencing the highest tax rate increase, um, had a big decrease in their equalization rate from last year to this year. And that's the the reason that their tax rate is increasing. And the the bottom of this slide just shows the tax rate change over those years for each town. So unless the board uh has any questions or would like to talk about it, I don't have anything else other than to say that we do have information that'll be on our website tomorrow. Um, if anyone has a copy of this electronically, you can click on the link to get to our tax collection page. And tax collection will start on September fifteenth. Uh, the penalty free period is through October fourteenth, and then uh we also collect taxes from October fifteenth through October thirty first with a two percent penalty. And uh all of these are, our tax collector works with the other tax collectors in the county to set the dates so that we're aligned with other school districts. Uh, because the larger towns actually collect for uh the school districts, like we don't collect our taxes for Hyde Park or uh for Poughkeepsie. Um, and then the two percent penalty is actually in New York State law. You know, have a a choice to uh you know, have have a different rate during that time period.
All right, thanks. Any other discussion on uh eleven point four? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Linda. Um, twelve point one, could I get a motion to enter our second public participation?
So moved to Christine.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. So reminder, you have three minutes. Uh, this uh session will be limited to twelve minutes. Please provide your name and address when you reach the podium. Would anyone like to address the board? Okay, at this time we'll close.
Don't get off of me.
Too late, no.
I'm loud anyway. Um, so my name's Angelica Cologne Russell. Um, I know a lot of people on the board. And they know me personally. I'm very involved in my, oh, and my address, fourteen and Kennedy Lane, Poughkeepsie, New York, one, two, six, zero, one. Um, my kids, there's two of my kids who have IEP. One of them, I probably spend more time at the district and spent more time at Havland during his time at Havland, and now we're entering FDR, and I'm having a little bit of an issue having the same counselor for the same child that I had for my older child. Um, one thing I I was not thrilled to hear out of her mouth was that she doesn't know too much about special ed. I think we have to educate our guidance counselors on special ed children because it shouldn't be just for regular ed children. I want my son to feel as equal as a regular ed child feels. And the fact that he hasn't even started at FDR and it's already given me chills to send him there is definitely a big issue for me, and I'm sure Dr. Roman and Ms. Lawson have seen me several times show face and tell them like, I'm a low parent. I will stand up for my child. I'm a big advocate on children with special needs. Um, I don't feel like they're supported enough in schools, especially by guidance counselors, um, not just special ed, but also general ed. I had a counselor tell me that my son shouldn't look at D one colleges that he needs to reevaluate and talk to his coaches and see um where what colleges he should apply to. That's crushing a child's dream. And that's one thing that as educators, as district members, as people, as a parent, it should, people should feel that. They should feel bad even letting those words come out of your mouth when you're crushing a child's dream like that to go to these schools. Um, I know kids that exited FDR, and maybe they did not go straight into a D one college, but they are attending D one colleges now. These these co- guidance counselors have to be educated on special ed children and on regular ed children and how to communicate with them. And I think a lot of it has to do with the children aren't feeling comfortable enough to go to these guidance counselors or anybody in the school to talk about what colleges they should be looking into, or can you help me apply? Um, my nephew did not get a lot of help. And his documents weren't sent over to colleges that needed to be sent over. Um, I have a friend that has chosen to remove her child from Hyde Park School District and move him to private school because she's had so many issues regarding documentations and IEPs and I I just, I feel like if if there's parents out there that aren't being heard and aren't standing up for their child, they're just being pushed to the side and told, let's amend this and just get rid of it. My son got OT taken away, and he was told. I wasn't told. It and to remove something from an IP without telling a a parent is huge. That's violating all rights, telling a child, oh, don't worry about it. You don't get OT anymore. That is violating my child's rights. And throughout my child, my cam- my my child's name is Cameron Russell. I really am not opposed to holding my child's name up.
The three minutes is up.
No problem. Um, he has had the worst experience but ending Havland. Melissa Lawson has helped him feel way more comfortable with entering FDR. And I haven't, I'm I'm really trying to hold back the issues that's going on before he even enters FDR. So if we can just educate these educators um a little better on special ed children and um especially the aides and making sure that they know how to handle special ed children as well with ADHD and all other needs. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board?
Hi, Mary Jane M. J. McFarlane, two, two, five, Marshall Road, Hyde Park, New York. Um, I am on the Booster Club for the FDR Varsity Football Program. I'm here with two colleagues, uh, Kristen Lake and Angelica uh Cohen. And we are here because our item ten point ten was on the agenda and it was approved. Um, that's the golf cart donation, and we thank you so, so much for approving that um for Coach Barger. It'll be greatly utilized. And in um return, is it possible if the board can write a thank you card to the golf associates? Especially to golf cart Annie. She was great in this whole process, and we just really, really need to thank her. Um, I guess in the past, she had donated a golf cart to FDR um years and years and years ago, and there was some bad communication between FDR and the golf cart associates. And she's just has a little bad taste in her mouth from back then, and we just kind of want to soothe over any ill will feelings that happened before, and we are so appreciative of this for um Coach Barger. So if you guys don't mind, please writing a little note to her. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, at this time we'll close public participation. Um, so for your stuff, I think that's something you gotta.
Yeah, we'll we'll certainly follow up and we'll follow up with you uh on those um items. I I what I what I will share is, I'm sorry that that's been your experience, right? Um, but I I I know I know that our educators um want to do the best work for kids. Like, they don't go into this profession um looking to, you know, do any ill will on on any particular student. Uh, what we also know is that last, a couple of months ago, we have videos uh from student experiences about their interactions with their counselors, and they were, they were hard they were heartfelt. Um, so we know that they want to do the best work possible for kids. So again, I apologize that that's been your experience, but I know that, you know, overall, like our 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 educators are here putting students first, uh but definitely hear your concerns, and we'll definitely follow up on those.
And I think we we'd all echo Dr. Roman. Group of students, the special needs students is the most important thing we do, and we did hire a guidance director, you know, to to try to help with the guidance department. So hopefully, you know, that's very rare that something like that is perceived that way, and maybe there could be some updated trainings, but, you know, we we all fully support what Dr. Roman said.
Is that, I'm sorry, can I just ask one question? Is that hired for FDR or just the district in general?
There's a district, a district wide person. Well, for guidance.
For guidance, yeah, that's right.
Um, other matters deemed necessary by the board. So board members don't leave. You got to sign something here. Um, so um, we need your signature, so don't run out of here. Um, any other matters?
Yeah, the I would say is it's wonderful to see such turnout. It's great to have people come out, and um I'm always touched, especially when we see former board members. Dan Duffy is in the house with Mrs. Duffy, and uh you know, before I became a board member, I used to sit at home and watch, watch the board meetings. This this was my life, and I always liked that Dan would always ask the interesting question. The group would be discussing something, and Dan would say, yes, what about this? And I I was always impressed with that, and I I hopefully I I learned from Dan coming in to be in a board member, so it's great to see Dan here and his wife.
All right, any other matters? No need for a second executive session? So can I get a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So moved. Second to it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Meeting adjourned.